Good evening and welcome to the weekly Lawrence City Commission meeting. As I say every week, this time of year, let's make sure that we check on all of our friends and neighbors, the heat's gonna, it's getting bad, check on your pets and everybody else, make sure everybody has water because it's pretty dangerous out. First item on our agenda this evening is the consent agenda. And all matters listed on the consent agenda are to be considered under one motion and will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion on those items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda, will be considered under, considered separately. So, are there any items on the consent agenda that a member of the commission would like to have removed for discussion? Bob?
6A and 13.
Okay. Any other items?
No, sir.
I'd like to have item number three for vote, which is claims. Any item on the consent agenda that a member of the public would like to have removed for further consideration?
6A.
Okay, yeah, that's already pulled, so. Anyway, okay, any others? Okay, so with the exception of items 3, 6A, and 13, I would entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda?
Moved.
Second? Motion made in second for approval, made by Vice Mayor Farmer, second by Commissioner Girdon. No questions? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes 5-0. Next item are claims, the first one are two claims, the 251 vendors and the amount of Initiate a motion for approval?
Moved, second.
Motion made in second for approval, no questions? Made by Commissioner Shum, second by Vice Mayor Farmer, all in favor of that motion? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes 5-0. And then there are claims, items related to Rock Chalk Park, there's two seven vendors and the amount of $26,709.50. Initiate a motion?
Moved.
Second? Is that for approval? Wow, that was for approval? Oh, okay. Motion made in second for approval, made by Commissioner Shum, second by Commissioner Girdon.
Just trying to trick you up there.
All in favor of that motion? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Passes four to one. Mayor Amick's in dissension. Item 6A is ordinance number 9026, and it's amending the city code in section 17, section 6-1711. This is with mobile food vendors to be, remove the timer restriction.
Thank you, Mayor Scott McCullough with the Planning Office, provide a little context by which this comes to you tonight. A few years ago, we didn't have mobile food vending regulations. We were approached by the industry who wanted to have some regulations that would allow them to move around the city during lunch hours and dinner hours and sell food to different parts of the business community. Go through East Hills, for example, or go to a construction site, always on private property, not in the right-of-way, and be truly mobile. To accommodate that approach, we came up with some of the license restrictions that you see, that I'll walk you through just generally here today. Since that, since those regulations, I'm not sure we've had but maybe one license issued for someone who truly uses the regulations that we, that we put in place a few years ago. In the meantime, we've had, we have two examples right now that we outlined in the memo where the current regulations don't accommodate what they, what they desire for their vending business. One is in the Warehouse Arts District where there's a desire to establish a site of multiple vendors, a permanent site of multiple vendors. They may be there seasonally and they may change out, but they will want to site plan that site and be there kind of in a concentrated manner. The other example is the Snow Cone vending unit at Sixth and Monterey who desires us to have longer operating hours and to stay at that location in a more permanent way. And this will make a little bit more sense as we go through some of these specific criteria, how they are constrained. So, when we looked at our restrictions, there were a number of different avenues we could pursue to accommodate their specific request. We chose to take each restriction, keep the restriction that I'll review in a minute, but open it up if they came in and did a site plan with notice to surrounding owners for a typical site plan, standard site plan practice, and if it's zoned appropriately in a commercial district. So, the first requirement, restriction that we looked at was D in the ordinance, "Mobile food vendors are prohibited from offering for sale any food or beverage from an unoccupied or vacant lot, except as approved with a city-approved event or pursuant to a city-approved site plan." So, today, under the regulations, you can't even in a temporary fashion go to a vacant lot and set up your vending practice. This would open that door, again, for the East Lawrence example, it's a vacant lot today, they would site plan it for that more, more permanent use. E states that no more than two units may be operated at the same time on any single property. We've got a third example, well, I guess the Bistro at Eighth and Pennsylvania can operate, plans to operate with two mobile units in a permanent fashion, so this would help accommodate them as well. The example where they want to do more than two can't be done unless we look at this restriction and amend it. Criteria F is that vendors are prohibited from offering for sale food and beverage from a single property for more than three hours out of the day. So, that's a restriction that constrains vending. Even the Bistro at Eighth and Penn would be constrained to three hours a day unless we kind of relax that standard. And G, so those are the, those are the specific standards that constrain the folks who want to, to do this different kind of mobile food vending. And then G just sets forth a little bit of the process for site planning, that they must submit a standard site plan. A standard site plan institutes the requirement for notice, and it must meet all other requirements of the Land Development Code, and it must be in a zoning district where fast-order food is allowed. So, that's the context, that's the proposal today, and I stand for questions.
So, Scott, if someone comes in and goes through the site planning process, and they're on a lot that has the necessary amount of parking that would be on that site, and this is going to take up whatever amount of parking that there's going to be, is that appropriate?
It would be with this proposed amendment. Today, they're allowed to go to a site, we don't site plan it, they have these restrictions, they're there just very temporary during the day, very temporary during the week, just once daily for three hours. If we accommodate the request today, they would need to site plan it, we would look at parking because there would be a permanent fixture, we would look at what, where the unit sits, we would look at any tables and chairs that can be set up seasonally, four as an accessory component of the unit, and make sure that they have parking otherwise. Look at ADA spaces, make sure they're not taking up ADA spaces, those kind of, those kind of site plan elements.
So, if somebody has just met the parking requirement according to our code?
Right.
And, and one of these, uh, mobile food units takes up part of those spaces, that's, that's still something that's acceptable to planning?
No, not necessarily. They would have a couple of options there, depending on the specifics of the request. There is some administrative authority to grant a variance to the parking, there's the variance procedure to the BZI, and then if it's that much of a challenge or that, where those two avenues are not accommodating them, then they just simply won't be able to do it, because parking is part of this situation.
I figured it was with chapter 20, but other part of the deal was, is that as we look at, say you have, you know, a business that has gotten a variance from the parking requirement somehow, and that, I just don't think that, that's acceptable at all as far as a location that would go, but they'd still be able to apply at a, at a location that had received a variance?
They would be able to apply whether they would be granted or not, and I agree with you, Mayor, that not every site is going to be able to accommodate this use, it's an added use to the site.
Okay. Questions?
Yeah. Is, um, is there a requirement, um, to have these vehicles move every so often?
Under the proposal, no.
Okay, and the reason why I say it, my daughter lives in Portland, Oregon, and that is the food capital, or truck food capital of the world, and they have some trucks, I don't think, that have moved in, since before she was born, I'm sure. And so, you, you have just shells of vehicles that have no way of even moving, and, and no one's asking them to move as part of the charm of their city. I'm not sure how that charm would go over here in Lawrence, if you've got those kinds of vehicles that are literally rusting in place and, and not capable of movement, so there's, and then there's also questions, just coincidentally, today in the mail, I got these, this whole wonderful brochure on food carts and food trailers, there's a lot of food trailers out there that you can pick up and drop off, and I don't know if we address any of that in the ordinance as well, a food trailer that would be left as opposed to a food truck.
We do define, uh, in the full ordinance, a unit as a self-contained vehicle, trailer, cart, or other type of conveyance from which food or beverage is offered for sale. So, it would, it's a pretty raw definition.
The other, the other, I called the Department of Agriculture today, who regulates food service licenses, and in the state of Washington, they're required to have a commissary that they're, they are bound to, and so that, the idea is that the food's properly stored, cooled and frozen, the dishes are properly sanitized and pots and pans and all those things. Kansas doesn't have that regulation yet, I would suspect because of such a new industry that there's not much thought that has gone into the process yet. So, there's no, only the vehicle is licensed and it's, the woman I talked to at the Department of Agriculture said, "It depends on the type of food you sell, whether it has to have an additional infrastructure tied to it in order to have it properly, proper food storage and proper sanitation." So, it's kind of, it's out there too, that in Kansas, it's not quite as developed as what it is in other states. So, um, the, the concern I have, I guess, is that, number one, the vehicles are not going to, there may be some vehicles put into play that are not going to look very nice, and that, secondly, once they're there, they can stay there for, basically forever, as long as the landlord says that maybe there's some unintended consequences that will start to show up and some complaining. So, I, I don't know what the right answer is, but it seems to me like if we required them to move every so often, that the vehicle would have to be of such a, in such a condition that it could drive legally on the, on the, on the roads of the city, so I don't know what that, I'm not trying to add more regulation into this, but I'm trying to keep from having a situation occur that we, we say, "Whoops, we really shouldn't have gone that direction with it." So, that's my thoughts on it. I did receive a couple of comments, or one comment today about trash, commercial entities pay for trash, where will the trash go that's generated from a food truck? Does it get dumped in the dumpsters of someone else's, or does it end up at home, or the question?
On that specific item, if site planned in a multi-unit way, there would be a requirement to provide a trash disposal area. We'd work with solid waste on what that is, dumpster or carts.
So, um, under current regulations, let's just say, under your scenario, there's a food truck that's not, you know, that hasn't moved in two years and is not tagged appropriately, that's a violation of city code, right? That, that vehicle could be towed?
Under the, if these were adopted and they would, I mean, we do still have property maintenance codes that would be applied to any site, commercial or otherwise. And so, we would look to those regulations for items such as trash or, uh, repair work that has to happen to the unit, we'd have to look at whether or not the licensing was part of it. Any unit does have to keep up certain licensing as spelled out in the full ordinance.
And I guess, I guess on a public street, if there's a car that hasn't moved there for, you know, six months and it has expired tags from 2009?
Take it, take it.
And then eventually towed?
Don't know about towed, but I think it's 48 hours that you can't stay in any one of the vehicles.
I think we could eventually go on a dilapidated vehicle and, and go through your environmental code process to abate.
Having dealt with that many times on my street, if they're there longer than X amount of hours, they give them notice that they have X amount of hours to move, and if they move 10 feet, that's enough, that they can't stay in the same spot.
So, Scott, if, as we look at this, this accomplishes what you've seen as something that needs to happen, you've tried to, you know, work any, any of the bugs or the details out, the, if someone has a complaint about the condition of a vehicle, normal complaint, you know, through your department, it's handled that way, see if violations occurs, nothing in here stops any of that process?
Correct, but I think under the context of the discussion, we may need to put some language specific to that, if that's the concern in, in this ordinance. I would be more comfortable with having that code support to go out and do that kind of enforcement.
So, you know, we, we need a maintenance, we need a maintenance item added to this of the vehicle. General site planning procedures are going to continue to include the trash and, and how that's taken care of?
Yes.
There's another? Other things, Bob?
Well, if, if, I, I think the food vehicles ought to be self-contained, energy-wise, in other words, we're not going to see extension cords 150 feet long plugged into the front foyer of somebody's office, I mean, you got that, or else somebody's going to be stringing them overhead, and so, if, I, I think that ought to be in there, that it has to be a self-contained energy package so that we don't have an unsightly amount of electrical cords all over the place, it can be dangerous as well, so.
Who's certifying that the food is properly stored, properly prepared and safe?
There is a requirement to get a copy of the state license for food service, if such is required, from the state.
And what, what does that do? I mean, how would this vary from, I know with the farmer's market, there are certain criteria that they have to have, has to be cooked in a certain place, done in a certain way, what?
And, and the state handles those inspections of carts, as I understand it?
A state license gives you the ability to do it, but who's certifying this, and how often do they certify?
I would have to get that information.
Yeah, okay.
I could tell you, it's the Department of Agriculture, which runs the state food service inspections, and you are usually inspected twice a year. It's the same for restaurants, it's the same license.
Okay.
That's, I've had that information this afternoon.
And, and it's possible for somebody to bring it, are we, are we looking at a mobile, when I hear the word "mobile," I think, they're going to come, they're going to set up, they're going to leave. Now, this would allow people to come, set up, and stay there?
Yes.
Okay. And, um, they'll have to do that in a way where, um, the parking is adequate, and, and when you bring a new building to a, to a, to a parking lot that's already been site-planned, there's going to be additional parking spaces that are needed, they're going to have customers, so not only do you have to fulfill for the business that's there, you have to fulfill for theirs. How are you going to determine the amount of parking that's needed for one of these?
It's based on current use, a lot of times when a, when a property is developed, it's developed with a certain amount of parking. Over time, those uses change, and you may have more parking than your current use requires. And those are the instances, that happens more often than you might think. Those instances would be sort of ripe for bringing on a mobile food unit. So, in the, in the development projects that have excess parking, they would be able to accommodate, it may be that they would need to add parking to the site to accommodate something like this.
Terry, in answer to one of your questions about the food, and Bob obviously knows it better than I ever know, but we currently have the food vendors, like the hot dog stand in Stan Town, they go through a similar license and then go through inspections from time to time, and you say it's, what, a couple of times a year, Bob? Twice a year?
Unless, unless you've got some issues and you'll see them more quickly.
They come around. But anyway, so we're already, you know, having, you know, businesses go through that kind of thing, and they have to get the state license now and then go through the inspections, so that can be accommodated there. My big thing was, it was just on the parking requirements and making sure that, that the businesses that are there, that we're not using up some of the parking that we require, and like I said, I just don't think it ought to be a place where, if a variance has been granted, I, I can't even imagine ever allowing something that was going to bring in or take up the parking that was remaining, so. Are there other items that the commission would love to add?
Yeah, yeah. Bob mentioned this self-contained, you know, power, energy concept, and to me, that means that they're going to either have to have their own generator, which is going to be loud and disruptive, or they're going to have to have batteries, and, you know, frankly, I'm just not sure that's going to be adequate for the type of trucks I know that we're talking about. I think that as long as the power is provided in a safe and proper manner, and they're not strung, as you said, across the yard, but, you know, there's an adequate power receptacle nearby and they can plug into it, I think that would save a lot of noise, a lot of energy, a lot of wasted electricity, because basically every cart would have to have their own generator if they're going to be self-contained.
You're right, I, what I, what I meant is a temporary, uh,
Right.
... lines across fields.
Right, we want, we want proper and adequate power, safe, energized outlets nearby, and, yeah, that's, that's, otherwise it's going to be difficult to, to site more than one or two of these anywhere because of the, just from the noise from the generator, so that, that's the only thing I had a concern with, is how to power them, having self-contained power.
I have some more thoughts, but I'd like to hear what the public has to say first.
Thanks, Scott. Public comment?
Good evening, I think now is the time for me to stand up, so, apologize about earlier, but I'm, uh, my name's Tom Larkin, I'm one of the representatives that has been pushing for this ordinance to change, and I think all the points that were brought up are very valid and absolutely something that we've taken into mind as we've started to think about how this development could work. You mentioned, Mr. Mayor, about the parking situation, and I can't speak to anyone else, I know you're trying to, to kind of plug the hole before something else comes up elsewhere, but our thought was this would function more as a park than a parking lot, so if a food truck is not there, it wouldn't be used for car parking, it wouldn't be used for automobile parking, it would be a concrete plaza or seating area, not, so it wouldn't be displacing any parking. The, the idea of the electrical outlets is definitely something we're taking into consideration, and we'll have, it'll be set up more like an RV park, and that there's access to water and power right next to their, their station, as well as personalized kind of raised garden beds if they decide they want to grow their own garden, their own herbs, vegetables, et cetera, that'll be there for them as well. Otherwise, this seemed like a natural fit in the Warehouse Arts District, it's, it's an art form in itself, and there's now more affordable, high-quality food items that are available in food trucks that weren't necessarily 10 years ago, and with the success of the Food Truck Festival, this seemed like a good time for Lawrence to, to embrace this, this movement, and I, I know of a number of trucks personally that have reached out and said, "You know, Tom, when something's available for us where we don't have to market, we don't have to reach out to our, our followers to tell them where we're going to be when, then, you know, let us know and we'll, we'll go through the process of the city of applying for a mobile food vendor license and, and go through whatever we need to legally." So, I guess that, that doesn't expand too much on what you, you all have already brought up, but I think it does make sense to have some of that verbiage and language in, in the code, and trash, you mentioned trash as well, there will be a receptacle there, and it will be handled just like any other commercial property, so, just thought that was worth bringing up, so.
Next one. Other comment?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners, my name's Katie Walsh, I'm representing the East Lawrence Neighborhood Association, just a couple of questions. I may have misheard Scott say that food trucks will be allowed wherever fast food is allowed in terms of zoning, and if so, the Board of LNA is preparing a letter to send to the Planning Commission about the proposed zoning change in, at the end of East Ninth Street from IG to IL, supporting the change, but not supporting fast food, fast food drive-throughs, bars, payday loans, you know, the things that we don't want in residential area. So, is there a conflict if we don't support fast food, are we saying we don't support food trucks? Might be a Scott question, thank you.
Yeah, fast, fast-order food is the use classification that most closely fits what a food truck is, it's packaged food that you consume either there or take away from you. Fast order with a drive-through is a different use in our code, so what we're saying is that it's that fast-order food use that has to be present in the zoning.
Okay. Thank you. Other comment?
Kyle Bardell, I'm the, one of the other people wanting this. I was going for more of the seasonal aspect, as the Shave Dice vendor, I really only have a four-month window to make any money, so in order to facilitate a quality operation, I can't afford a brick-and-mortar store, and this, I was, when I worked with Scott and his staff, some of the things I had proposed were a little different, more geared towards seasonal, but I think this fits fairly well into what I was asking for. My, my big thing was just being able to be open all day instead of, for only three hours in one location, and as far as moving every year, whatever, so you don't have the rundown, whatever's out there, I don't think it'd be a bad idea to have, have that ability so they at least have to move once a year, so you do eliminate that aspect of that. But with mine, I just, I feel like, because Shave Dice and other seasonal vendor people such as myself, we can produce a much better aesthetic to our product that we're trying to give, because I can, I don't have to support a brick-and-mortar store all year on four months of income, so I can, I can make it look better, and I think that just, in those other months as well, then we can disappear and you don't have that eyesore to look at for the rest of the year, so. And then, one other thing was the self-contained, I just would like to express that even, I don't know where that language would be directed, but a trailer, in my opinion, is just as mobile as a truck with an engine, so, I mean, I can hook up within a matter of two minutes, I just wanted to make sure that was something that may have been addressed, so I wasn't, so the trailer wasn't excluded, but, yeah, I think this is good and in the right direction.
Thanks, Scott. Other comment?
Can I get a clarification?
Sure.
I apologize, but I didn't understand your answer about fast food and food trucks, I'm sorry.
Fast-order food is defined as an establishment whose primary business is the sale of food, A, primarily intended for immediate consumption, B, available within a short waiting time, and C, packaged or presented in such a manner that it can be readily eaten outside the premises where it is sold. This category includes both establishments that have seating areas for consumption of prepared food on the premises, and those that provide food only for consumption off the premises. This category does not include drive-in, fast-order food establishments, so think Subway, Jimmy John's, those are fast-order food establishments.
Okay. And then, how would someone be able to do the 48 hours?
And then how would someone be able to do the 45%, 55% to comply with that if they're only allowed to be open for three hours? Would you combine like the two food truck sales or, that's just a question. Thank you.
Thank you.
If you're speaking specifically about the Bistro project, this is being put forth in part for that project as well. Tom's group is, that's kind of wrapped up in this as well, is in order for them to be able to sell food more than three hours a day at that particular property, they need the code amendment.
And is there a specific section of the code, the number that Katie can go to? She needs to reference that.
Yes. 20-1724.
Okay. Thank you. Other comment? Okay, back to the Commissioner. Bob, you had some other things you could...
Yeah, I've got a question for Scott. So I get a brand-new food truck and I go out on one of the new establishments out on West 6th Street. And I make a deal with the private owner to put my food truck right there. And all around me are restaurants. I mean, I'm going to take and sell barbecue right next to a barbecue restaurant. Goes through the site planning process. And if the neighbors all say, "No, we really don't want you out here." We really, and that would be just a competitive situation.
Right.
Do they have a firm voice that counts? Or is that a political decision by this body or is it a, is it a planning decision?
It's a, it's a policy decision that needs to be made at the time of your consideration of this ordinance. Because if the use is allowed, then they do have the right to appeal to the City Commission, but it's only on site plan elements, setbacks, parking issues, stormwater, those kinds of things. They really don't, under our framework of codes, have the ability to say, "We don't want the use" if the use is allowed.
Okay. So here's, here's where I'm at on this. And from being a long-term food service operator, I can see this pretty crystal clear. In that's, that case scenario which I just explained, I'm the guy that has a brick-and-mortar store and I'm paying about $25,000 a year in property taxes. The food truck comes in and locates directly alongside me, sells basically the same thing I'm selling. And his or her expenses, tax-wise, are probably $2,500 or $3,000 a year. They can, they can sit and pick off the busy days. They get in there on Friday, Thursday, Friday and Saturday and then drive away. I'm stuck there with seven days a week with help and it's a very unfair situation. So there's two things here. I think, first of all, that you're going to find, and I appreciate the two gentlemen that are here that have made comments. Our problem is we have to make a, we have to have an ordinance that is for the entire city, not two specific sites. And both of your sites are very, very specific. But I can see the situation where a landlord says, "Hey, I've got a couple vacancies here. Come on on, food trucks. Let's put eight or 10 of those things right in here because there's a lot of restaurants around here and I'll get some money from the food trucks that park here and that'll help me out." And if they had vacancies, they would have a sufficient number of extra parking spaces that they wouldn't be needing. So I can see, so where I'm going is, first of all, there should be some competitive language in there that you can't locate within 500 feet of another like store. I mean, something like that, just, I think that's only fair. There's only, there's an equity issue there. Secondly, I think there ought to be a total number that has to be capped in some way so you don't have these huge conglomerate or almost food courts that start to arrive by virtue of having food trucks that are mobile. And then, you know, I think they, there should be some movement that they have to come and go so that we have bona fide food truck vehicles or trailers if they're appropriate. So those are some of the thoughts I have. I'd rather think this thing through today before we have an ordinance and we have to deal with the after-effect or the problem that could occur. And it probably will occur at some point. There's going to be some competitive issues that start to arrive. So that's my thoughts on it.
So then the language that we have that talks about no more than two mobile food units, we operated from the same, same time on any single property. You want that, you would like to have that stronger than that or...
I mean, that's, that's fine. I think the warehouse arts districts is, it's a totally different situation. They're gearing up for more festival, special event activities, which you would need more accommodation. But just for the person who goes out and stakes out a claim in somebody's parking lot on Iowa Street or West 6th Street or South Iowa Street, then that's, that's a whole different issue that we need to be carefully defining.
So when we, when, you know, conversely, when my wife and I owned the hot dog stand, the city was gracious enough to have specific corners that you could locate on. And you had to get approval from the property owners or the business owners, and I can't remember which one it was, within 75 feet of the location that you're at. And you were, at that time, the, your ability to get that license was dependent upon the positive response of the surrounding businesses.
But that's not the issue.
But that's not what we're doing here, but I'm...
As a model for...
Yeah, the model for what you're trying to accomplish. And I'm not saying 75 feet, but...
You know, I'm, I'm arguing the competitioning.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
I know.
You can put distance...
Right. And that's what I just said. If you had 500 feet of a like competitor, then that protects that person to a degree. As opposed to somebody really coming in poaching right off their, their volume by being adjacent to them.
I have a real uncomfortableness with this and can't support it as written. For many of the reasons Bob is talking about. There's, I think there's too many unanswered questions and too many possibilities where this can go wrong. I have a problem with the words "mobile food court" or "mobile food vendors" where they're not mobile. I think that's an inappropriate use of the word "mobile." I think if they're mobile, they should be gone that day. We'll come up with another word or another. And I think this, this is a great thing, probably for the arts district, but not for the rest of the city. So to me, there are just too many unanswered questions. I'm not saying it's a bad idea. I'm just saying I don't think we're at a, at a ordinance where we, that I can support it.
You know, I guess, I guess I struggle with the competition aspect because I haven't heard from any restaurant owners. And, you know, we don't tell a Menards they can't locate next to a Home Depot or a Burger King that they can't locate next to a McDonald's, even though they're like, they're like things. I, I know that I would be prone to go to a food truck on days when I don't have 45 minutes or an hour to go sit down at a restaurant and either wait for a table or, you know, if I didn't have a food truck option that day, then I would just either not eat or, you know, I would go home and grab something. I don't know, you know, I don't know that the competition aspect for me is, is one that I would necessarily buy into. And I don't think it's consistent with what we do with other, with other parts of our, with other parts of our code and with other parts of how we allow different things to locate. I think that the warehouse arts district is a very unique, you know, unique area in the sense that, you know, it's not going to be, there's no other restaurants down there. And this is going to be the kind of, kind of thing that serves a specific area where density is being built more and more all the time. And I think that the neighborhood, I would hope that the neighborhood would be strongly in favor of, you know, food trucks. And that way you're not having more brick-and-mortar buildings go up and it just seems like a really good thing for that area. I'm not sure what we could do specifically for that area because my concern is if we continue to hold this back because of, you know, concerns that we have about perhaps other areas of town. You know, we're restricting business from developing. And, you know, as, as you said, you know, having to constantly move. I mean, you know, we've got a small business. I mean, 80% of business growth comes from small business. And, and we need, this is something we can do to help facilitate small business growing. And so, you know, I'd be okay with, you know, some of the things that we've talked about tonight as far as moving things. I'd certainly want to put things in here for variances. For instance, if, you know, a food truck is going to locate, I think the idea is incredible to have them growing their own food. I mean, that, you know, that's part of our community health improvement plan that this body's adopted for increasing access to healthy foods. And, you know, I would think that that would be a really good thing to encourage. And, you know, if they have to move every two days, then they, you know, to another spot, maybe they move two spaces ahead, but then they're not right next to their garden, which isn't a big deal. But I think consistency is, is going to be key here. So I'm not sure what the answer is. I, I think to, to kind of put this on the back burner because of all these concerns is prohibiting small businesses that are ready to, to move in this community from, from being able to operate in a manner that's, that's effective. And, and I have significant concerns about that because we talk about the need for jobs and economic development. This is, this is an avenue that we can pursue that. And, you know, for us to, for us to, you know, have concerns with that for, you know, whatever reason. I mean, I appreciate wanting to be consistent with the policy across the board. But, you know, what do we do in the meantime for businesses that are ready to come here for jobs and tax revenue and that sort of thing? You know, right now, we're saying, "Well, we can't do that because we don't have the whole picture figured out."
Yeah, this is getting complicated. I think that the concerns are real from the Commissioners. And I haven't heard any negative comments about this idea from anybody. I understand the competition angle. I just see a food truck serving a, I think Jeremy highlighted it pretty well, kind of a different type of customer. And I'm not sure if it would directly impact. I think competition is good. You know, we just recently had a pizza place go in on the west side of town where an existing local small business had opened up just a year and a half earlier. And that company came from out of town and the competition indicated who won. And it wasn't the out-of-town company. I mean, it's just a matter of quality and consistency. And people can come in and try to compete and I think that's good. But I'm not sure a food truck is going to yield the kind of impact on a bricks and, brick-and-mortar business that is going to drive it out of business. I think it might actually bring more customers to that corner, create more likelihood of somebody going inside, especially if the weather's not really good for, you know, eating outside or if the person wants to sit down and have a meal and be waited on. I mean, these are really different products. And just got back from Portland and doesn't seem to be hurting business there at all. I know there are, you know, vehicles that stay a long time and I'm in favor of requiring them to move. I think that's a great addition. I think it prevents some of the aging and the eyesores that I did notice in some parts of downtown Portland. But it's exciting to have new businesses try to grow. Those businesses can then decide if they want to move into a permanent location. Without these types of incubator spaces, you really don't get that competition. You don't get that variety and you don't get that energy that comes with people going to a place and buying stuff here in town. So I'm with Jeremy, you know, if I don't have time, I just don't eat lunch. And I'll just go somewhere, go to go home or I won't eat at all. I'm not sure it's taking away from an existing business. But I understand Bob's concern and I, I think we should at least consider it. But I'm not too concerned about competition. In fact, I don't think it's our job to limit competition. I think it's, it's a bad precedent for me to, to agree to that. I, everything else I'm okay with as far as adding to this.
So, yeah, and I think most of this, most of these things will work. I do have a little bit of concern about the competition, not from the standpoint of, you know, competing with another business, but, you know, just having, you know, several lots in a row and having a multitude of these starting to show up. What about the idea of 500 feet or 250 feet or something like that?
You know, and...
And that language?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not for being anti-competitive at all. I mean, I've been in this industry forever and that's one of the most competitive industries there is. But you're really changing the game. You're, you've got people now that have to be in a bricks and mortar operation. And they do compete. You see similar restaurants next door to each other, but they're competing in the same cost structure. When you run in a truck on them, they don't have the same cost structure. And yeah, you're right, some people won't. The people who are going to go in and sit down and eat are going to do that. But there are some people who'll go, "Well, maybe I'll just get this over here today instead of carrying something out of the restaurant, I'll just go over here." And so you really, you really do have a game changer. And then they can pick, they can pick the days, the better days to sit there and try and perform their sales. I do like the aspect that it is creative. It does bring new entrepreneurs on. So I'm not trying to get to the point where, I'm not, I'm trying to figure out how we say yes and don't get into trouble with it. I think this is a sleeper issue. I don't think the restaurateurs have paid attention to it. I would ask that we give it a week to see if there's any, any people that come forward that have concerns about it. I mean, I've gotten just one call and I didn't see much about it in the paper or much activity about it. And maybe that's, that's what they need to do is read what's happening and see what, see what their thoughts are. There very well may not be as big a concern as I think there would be. But I'd hate to find out afterwards, after we start, you start to see these things start to pile up and you get people down here pounding on the microphone, "Why'd you guys do this?" And so, anyway.
Well, here's the thing. We've got, we've got to make some wholesale kind of changes to this and it'll be, you know, eligible again for first reading in a week. So I think it would be smarter...
I think a couple of weeks to let us get the language drafted up.
Okay. I think I would leave space in there if you could about, you know, so many feet from, you know, these, from one another. And not from existing businesses, but, you know, like circles and from one location to the next. Okay. But add all the additional comments that have been brought forward by the Commissioners, okay?
So what, you know, what if you have three food trucks that want to, one's barbecue, one's Mexican, one's Chinese, that want to locate next to each other on a...
On one lot, three different lots?
Well, I mean, you know, one lot. I, I, I just don't, I mean, I agree with Mike. I mean, I, I think it's setting a dangerous precedent for us to try to regulate the industry from the very outset. I mean, there's, there's no possible way that I would be in support of setting up a, you know, 250 feet from some, because we just don't, we don't do that anywhere else in this community.
Okay. Make, make the changes to the ordinance.
We'll provide some options.
And a couple of weeks and we'll look at that. With that, I would entertain a motion...
Okay. Does this impact anybody that's about ready to do something?
I, I think we've got some time. Would you, gentlemen, agree to process this a little bit more and... I think the Bistro is probably the most urgent, pressing site plan we have.
Just one bad information out, that's all. You all decide.
Okay. Well, if we can get it done quicker, we'll get it done quicker. But two weeks from now. So I would entertain a motion then to defer this item for two weeks.
Second?
Motion made in second to defer it for two weeks. Made by Commissioner Schum, seconded by Commissioner Gorden. All in favor of the motion? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes 5-0. Next item is item, oh yeah, we're still on consent agenda. Item number 13, which is to approve a street event permit for the use of various streets, including the rolling closure of Northbound Lane and Massachusetts Street, downtown from 10:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. on Sunday, September 7th, 2014, for the circle of Sisterhood 5K.
Can't tell what's on. Good evening, Commissioners, Mayor Mark Teal, Assistant Public Works Director. The Kappa, Sigma Kappa Swarty has requested a street event permit to hold a 5K race. What's different from this race, from other 5Ks that are typically held in the downtown area, is there is another event that same day. Parks and Rec Department has, is holding the Fall Arts and Craft Festival and they had previously reserved South Park, which is usually the staging area for the 5K route. That has been typically approved for downtown use. So in working with the event organizers, we had asked them to go and stage at Hobbs Park. They've coordinated that with Parks and Rec. They have their permission to do that. And they've modified the route somewhat. And you can see this. So instead of coming down 15th Street into the downtown area and through South Park on Massachusetts Street, they will come down 11th Street, north of South Park and through downtown. And the rest of the route basically is the same as the normal route. If you would like, I can show you... If you would like, I, I can show you a map of a tip, a typical route if that's one of the questions for tonight. The event will be held on Sunday, September 7th from 10 a.m. to 11 a.m. The, they have an operations plan which was produced by the Lawrence Police Department that they'll be required as a stipulation of their event permit to adhere to, as well as the Lawrence Police Department assisting with the event. Stand for questions.
Mark, I think the big question was the time, the 10 to 11 timeframe. And is, is that something that we can change because you've got church and everything else that's going on? And, you know, that day is going to be really hard to find parking in downtown. You said that the Fall Arts and Crafts Festivals that day also. Is there any way to move this to an earlier time in the day? I mean, 10 to 11, I mean, could it be from eight till nine?
Absolutely. What we would do if, at your all's discretion or direction is I would go back to the requester of this permit and make that suggestion to them. And they would either, I mean, your action tonight could be to approve a, a different time or we could come back again with a proposed different time. Or you could just say tonight, you could make an action, make an adjustment to this, I assume, to change the time and that would be the time they would have to do it on. Or we could ask them to pick a different date. When, that was one of the discussions that I had had with the event requester was that, you know, there was another event previously on that date and would they be willing to pick a different date? It's a little difficult this time of year on Saturdays and Sundays to do events downtown. Saturdays, a lot of home football games and we typically don't allow people to close or alter streets on home football game days. So this was, and they, they had told me that they had already started to doing some advertising for the event. So I think your suggestion to change the time would be appropriate. I would go back to them and ask them if that's a, something they'd be willing to do. If not, then we would either not approve the event or ask them to do it on a different date.
Well, the other, the other, okay. So your, your 5Ks usually, the fast runners are going to be done in about 22 minutes. And then the slow runners are going to take about an hour because there's people actually walk these, most 5Ks are all kind of the same. And so you've got about a 40-minute window or 40, maybe even 50-minute window that you're going to have to have Massachusetts closed or inoperable. So either to move the time or why don't, why don't they just run a little further south on the trail, on Borough Trail and then just cut across 15th Street, cut down New Hampshire and go back and stay off Massachusetts Street? I mean, that, that to me makes a lot more sense than tying up all of Massachusetts Street. You're still going to have some traffic concerns, but not near as much as you would as if you run down Massachusetts Street. So maybe a, a time adjustment and a route adjustment would be beneficial. But I know that when we had a half marathon where they had to cut across and go over to campus, we had a lot of complaints because they really had to hold traffic up for sometimes as long as 20 minutes to let them get through intersection. So, you know, I'm all for the, the 5Ks and the running, but try and keep them separate. Borough Trail's a wonderful place to run. You can actually run all the way up to 28th Street on that thing, even unless it's going to be under construction. Maybe it's going to be under construction at that point, I'm not sure. But they can.
This is a desired route that we've, that we, used to be, when I took this over, there were several requests for different routes throughout the downtown area. And working with the police department, we've come up with a pretty standard route. And when we get requests to come downtown, we basically tell the, I'm going to pull that up for you. We tell them, you know, if you want to run downtown, this is the route that you have, you know, you have to use. And we, we come before you to do that. This is the, this is, right?
Yeah, both are the same.
Well, they've got the same map attached to both events, but the, the run to free event that you all approved tonight on the consent agenda, which is going to be held on Labor Day, is the same, is the typical route that runs from South Park down Massachusetts, east on 7th and works its way back around on 15th back to South Park. We can suggest to the event organizers a different route. That would not be an issue.
But it seems like the time is problematic with, you know, like I have, the, the 6:00 a.m. to 6:25 on, on Monday, there won't be anybody else around except a few people walking around. So there's, I don't see any conflict there. But then when you get 10 to 11 on Sunday morning, along with the other activities going on in the park, there's going to be a lot of traffic situations there, so.
Most of the races are earlier in the day. This was the time that they had requested.
Okay. Well, rather than changing the route at this late date, if we could just, if we could talk about the time and, you know, an eight to nine timeframe and then we can talk some other time about, you know, what these routes ought to be in downtown. But my suggestion would be is that, you know, the eight to nine time slot, see if that will work just because of everything that's going to be going on down there. We'll give them the option of another date to look at that.
Why don't we pass that conditionally? Just pass it that way and if they don't, if it doesn't work, they have to come back and do something else.
That, that's accurate. If you all approve the event today with the stipulation of a different time, that's, that's the condition that would go out with the approved permit to them. If they chose not to have the event, they would have to go through the process again.
Okay. Any other questions? Public comment? Okay. If there's nothing, I would entertain a motion then to approve this street event permit for the use of the, of Massachusetts Street, the northbound lane of Mass downtown from 8 to 9 a.m. on Sunday, September 7th, 2014 for the Circle Sisterhood 5K.
Moved. Second.
Motion made in second for approval, made by Commissioner Schum, second by Vice Mayor Farmer. All in favor of that motion? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes five zero. City Managers Report.
Mayor, Commissioners, we've just got a few items in this week's report. Do you need infrastructure report at Rock Chalk Park? A mid-year report on the Building Maintenance Division in your Public Works Department. Diane provided an update on the Santa Fe Station project. We continue our discussions with the BNSF and Amtrak, hope to be able to keep that project moving forward. Ward to our Utility Department, lead to wastewater treatment plant. Had a neat Lawrence and Focus video on bike lanes. Jessica, others were involved in preparation of that. And then we have an open house next Monday to talk about the RFQ, the Request for Qualifications that we have prepared pursuant to your direction for the Ninth Street reconstruction and art project. We'll be receiving some public comment in regards to that and send out that RFQ and then see who is interested in the project. Have a, an interview team to review the, the applicants and then come back with a recommendation to you all for that important consult report. Be happy to respond to any questions that you might have.
Questions, City Manager?
Bob? So I'm, I'm looking at the Rock Chalk Park, what was it called? Infrastructure report. And I'm down on water lines. Whoops. Just moved. So, under the summary of costs, says the cost per development agreement, $468,061.65. And it says the final cost, construction cost is $462,522.49. Which one do we pay? We pay the lesser amount or the greater amount?
Well, we'll pay off what was completed that we agreed is, is, is accepted. So it would be at the $462,522.
Okay. All right. Then when you go down to sanitary sewer then, the summary cost was the cost of development was, agreement was 162, but the final construction cost is 174.
We'll pay the 174 because we accepted those, that, that work and those costs. The earlier was an estimate.
Okay.
That's, that's how the development agreement reads. That's how we're proceeding with. Those, and those projects, I mean, I think it's, it's largely done. I think we're working on one water line easement issue on that. That won't be, it's not a cost item, but those, those items are up and operational right now.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions, City Manager? Okay. Thanks, Steve. Onto the regular agenda. We have one item that deals with the 2014 MS Bike Event. And we've got three items. One is to conduct a public hearing. Two is to consider approving the street event permit for the closure of Massachusetts Street from South Park to North Park Street and on and on and on. And last is consider adopting on first reading ordinance number 9023, allowing for the sale, possession and consumption of alcohol on Saturday, September 13th to Sunday, September 14th at 12 p.m. Mark?
Good evening again, Mayor, Commissioners, Mark Teal, Public Works Department. This is the fourth year that the City of Lawrence has been selected to be the overnight stay for the MS, what used to be the MS 150, I think it's now MS 75 or something like that. But riders stage in Kansas City, ride to Lawrence, make their way into town and spend the night in South Park on Saturday night and then depart, basically following the same route back to Kansas City on Sunday. The map that I have shown up here shows the various closures and the various times of the closures based on when the riders arrive and overnight and when the riders depart. There's, they're expecting approximately 2,000 riders into the community for this event. And like you said, it is a two-day event. There is a requirement for a public hearing because of the sale of alcohol within the prox, within the proximity of two churches near South Park. And then, so the, accompanied with the action item is also an ordinance to sell, possess and consume alcohol and then to approve the event permit. Bob Sander with Lawrence Sports Corporation is here as well. He's the event organizer. He'll be glad to answer questions as well as my.
Mark, this is exactly what was closed last year, isn't it?
Yes, this is identical to last year's event.
Okay. We didn't have any problems?
No.
Okay. Any questions? Okay. Thanks, Mark. This is a public hearing. At this time, I would open up a public hearing. And is there any member of the public that wishes to make a public comment?
I move a closed public hearing.
Motion made in second to close the public hearing, made by Commissioner Schum, second by Vice Mayor Farmer. All in favor of that motion? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing is closed. Next item is to consider approving the street event permit for the closure of Massachusetts Street and the other parking areas at the community center. Entertaining, any questions on that? Entertain a motion for approval of the street event permit?
Move. Second.
Motion made in second for approval, made by Commissioner Schum, second by Vice Mayor Farmer. All in favor of that motion? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes five zero. And last is to entertain a motion to adopt on first reading ordinance number 9023, allowing for the sale, possession and consumption of alcohol from 5 a.m. Saturday, September 13th to 12 p.m. Sunday, September 14th of 2014 in South Park and on Massachusetts Street between North Park and South Park Streets. Entertained motion for approval?
Moved. Second.
Motion made in second to adopt on first reading ordinance number 9023, made by Commissioner Dever, second by Vice Mayor Farmer. All in favor of that motion? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes five zero. General public comment? Future agenda items?
You see the memo there? You have the Lynx Project.
And commission items?
I'm just wondering if we could have an update on the houses that have been fire damaged. I haven't seen any activity on the one on 13th in Tennessee for months. And I certainly haven't seen any in the last week.
Okay.
And I'm concerned because the house has dilapidated. I don't think that it's properly secured and I think it's unsafe.
I could speak to that specific one this evening. We today actually mailed a notice to the owner requiring initiation of construction and content, consistent repair work by September 4th. You, the city commission has already given the order to raise the structure or have it repaired. And so we were in that process of, he, there is a permit ready to pick up. And so it's now incumbent upon the owner to act on, on the order, either repair it or have it raised. So we found it beneficial to give them a, give him a date by which he needs to get that work started.
Is it properly secured so their vagrants can't get in there?
We can check. Commissioner, we'll do that this week.
Scott, I appreciate you going ahead and taking the action on that to get that done. Bob?
One other piece of information. Previously, the City of Pittsburgh, Kansas had been awarded a $600,000 or $700,000 trail grant. And then there was some discussion as to whether the commissioners were going to approve it or not. I called the city today and they did approve taking the grant on a four-one vote. And that, I looked at, their match was a 70-30. And when we had our, when we submitted our grant request, we were at a 50-50. So that's information, but anyway. So there was some discussion as to whether they were going to accept it or not and they did go ahead and accept it.
You have a commission items?
I was just going to say thanks to everybody that participated today with the LS Ice Bucket Challenge, raised more than 500 bucks. And thanks to Public Works and Mike Perkins and Street Department for getting the cold water and the ice buckets and all that participated and, and all that donated too. So a pretty, pretty special thing. Evan's a, Evan's a great guy and having to deal with this disease every day. So I think they've raised over $13 million for this. So certainly was a good, good thing to participate in and be a part of. So thanks to, thanks to all you guys. Love to see Scott in his swimsuit next Tuesday night for the meeting.
And I can't say, as I was leaving and going back home, I saw the, the vehicle that dumped the water on us and he was still smiling.
Yeah.
And calendar items. Tomorrow afternoon, we have the event with the, our joint meeting with the county and the school district and that'll be at the county courthouse. That's four o'clock.
Correct. The other thing is we'll be in touch with you. We want to schedule a lunch meeting with the LA Mates Board of Trustees. So we'll be in touch as to what's a, a good lunch date to meet with them here in the coming weeks.
Okay. Any other calendar items? Entertain a motion to adjourn?
Move.
Second.
Motion made in second to adjourn, made by Commissioner Schum, second by Commissioner Hurdin. All in favor of that motion? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you all.